Good evening, friends.
Coordinated with it.
Time is now 6:00 PM and it's time to get our meeting underway. If you'd like to address the board during the comments and concerns sections, there should be comments cards in the foyer area. If you would, please fill those out and bring them to Mr. Harris or any member of the board and they'll see that I get to those during that part of the meeting. Also, members, silence your cell phones. Members of the audience, please do the same. At this time, I've asked Dr. Jackson to lead us in the invocation and pledge, so please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We're asking you to grace us with your presence. Allow us to deliberate on behalf of the residents of Swanee County that it will be a blessing and beneficial to all the residents here. And oh God, we're asking you to cover us with your love, with your peace, and your amazing grace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, we'd like to welcome one and all. Today is May 17th, 2016, and this is the regularly scheduled board meeting for the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County. Jumping right into our agenda here this evening, item number one would be the approval of the regular board meeting minutes from May 3rd, 2016. Board members, are there any changes or corrections that need to be made to those minutes as they are written? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner, which one was it?
Gamble.
Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. In the consent, agenda items number two through 20, there have been two items that have requested to be pulled, item number 12 and item number 16 for individual consideration. Board members, are there any other items that you would like to be pulled?
Mr. Chairman, number 12 and what other number?
Number 12 and number 16.
Okay.
Hearing none, I need a motion for approval for items two through 11, 13 through 15, 17 through 20.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Sessions, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving into item number 12, approval of mutual aid agreement with Lafayette County for fire rescue services. That request was made by Commissioner Larry Sessions, and we'll turn the floor over to him.
Looking at the agreement between us and Lafayette County, the, on the first page under witnesses, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6th one down, whereas, "From time to time, either party may need the assistance of the other party to provide supplemental non-emergency medical transport to cover a demand for such non-emergency transports which may deplete the resources of the party." I recommend approving everything in this except that portion. I'd like to have that taken out.
Okay. Is there any further discussion amongst the board?
And Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pravat.
Thank you. If we're going to make a change to that particular paragraph, there are corresponding paragraphs that, in the back a little bit, that need to be adjusted. Can't just pull out that where eyes clause by itself.
Okay.
So just be aware of that.
In the clauses themselves, it says, does it use the term may or shall Commissioner Sessions, or is it just if, is it on an as-needed basis?
It says may need the assistance of the other party, but that's just one thing that I don't really want to offer at all, is do that. So any, I'd like to make a motion to accept this contingent on anything from this paragraph and anything to do with it being amended in the resolution.
Okay.
In the agreement.
I hear you made a motion, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sessions. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? My only concern is that if, how do they currently configure their system and do they actually need our assistance in this area?
We have the EMS manager for Lafayette County.
Come to the podium and please state your name and address for the record, please, sir. We'd appreciate it.
Marty Tompkins, Director of EMS for Lafayette County. Address, you want my home address?
Home address.
3841 Saralee, Perry, Florida.
Thank you.
Actually, right now, and James and I were talking, and if you don't mind James putting his comments in also, we were talking that the non-emergency clause was actually requested by his billing company because if we bill the patient, when we pick a patient up and then for some whatever reason, we have to call Swanee County to transport the patient, then they can in turn bill the patient. It's all part of the Medicare modifiers, if you will, and so the billing company said that, so what we did with the emergency stuff was we agreed not to bill for any emergency calls where we pass that person off to Swanee County, if we pass it off. And if Swanee County comes to our county and picks that patient up, then they bill the patient as well. We don't bill that patient at all. We've not had any contact with the patient. And we don't necessarily need the non-emergency clause. I mean, obviously, if he needed some help, I'm going to try to send a truck, and if I need help, he tries to send a truck, and that's just the way we do business. We don't necessarily need the non-emergency clause, but if it's for his billing company and for their comfort to make sure we don't double bill a patient under the Medicare rules, I mean, that's up to James. I'm just telling you Lafayette County doesn't need the non-emergency clause.
So I'm correcting, so basically in your testimony here, what you're saying is that the clause was placed in there because if you were to call us, if you did need us, which you do, you do need our assistance.
Yes, sir.
Am I understanding you correctly?
Absolutely.
Then at that time, it presents a challenge for Swanee County to get paid if that clause is not in.
I'll let James answer that question. I think that's.
What's going to happen is a Medicare modifier that if you falsely accuse and falsify Medicare billing, like other companies, you'll get a $1.3 million lawsuit against you. And I don't think this county can support that. And this whole thing is to make sure that we can go over there, help Lafayette County any way we can, but we can bill that Swanee County residents don't get stuck with a Lafayette County bill. That is, all this entails.
I can't remember the last time we actually called Swanee County for a non-emergency transfer.
It's been a while, but I had issues with our billing company. Our billing company will not bill those bills until they have something in an agreement because they don't want to lose their Medicare rights because they lose them for every company that they have under their agreement. So they are protecting themselves and us as a client to make sure that the language is appropriate so they can bill Medicare.
Okay. And I'm going to ask this question to the Lafayette County EMS director. So in your, do you use a billing service as well, or how do you handle?
We do.
Okay. So are you, in your expert opinion, this is a reasonable request to do, to have this in the agreement so that it can be paid appropriately?
I really can't answer that question because our billing, we don't do pickups in any other county unless it was for an emergency basis. So our billing company doesn't have that modifier in there. We use a different billing company than James does. We use a company called Quick Med Claims out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, so.
This is for that situation, let's say they have one truck in their county. They're on a transport, transporting to a hospital. Their nursing home calls with a patient that they need transported to a facility. I have to have those, that language in that agreement so I can bill.
Because the nursing home patient could be considered a non-emergency transfer or a transport. Even though the doctor says we need to have the patient transported, it could be considered a non-emergency transport by Medicare.
I see.
So.
Okay. Well, that's all the questions I have. Does anybody else have any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for what you do as well.
Can you come, can you identify yourself, please?
Jesse Carruthers, 1732576th Street, Lively. My question was, who provides that service now when you don't?
Century Ambulance Service.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions by the board? Hearing none, there's a motion and second as the record reflects. Everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So we have to come back and revisit this again. Your motion was to approve it with the language stricken, and so now we are going to reconsider this mutual aid agreement if there is a motion on the floor to approve it as is.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So it was 3-2. Would I consider that? Or were you in favor?
I wasn't in favor.
Okay. So 3-2. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening. Going on to item number 16, authorization to piggyback Polk County bid for chip seal on 45th Road, 72nd Street, and 37th Road as part of the drainage project previously authorized for bid. This is a budgeted item. We'll turn our attention on this to Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, we did a lot of research, talked to a lot of companies, and made contact with counties that are using various companies. We found one that had, Polk County had recent bids for this service. We inquired about piggybacking on that. We compared numbers with other bids. Quite frankly, one of the big concerns was quality of work. We want to make sure that we get a quality job, and this company came highly recommended. It was a recently competitively bid contract. Can you hear me?
Barely.
Can you hear me? It was recently competitively bid, so we got those quotes in, got all the numbers. We're asking that we be allowed to go ahead and piggyback on that Polk County contract, competitively bid contract for this service.
Understood. Are there any comments?
I've got a comment.
Yes, sir.
I will refrain from voting on this one out of conflict.
Okay. All right, gentlemen.
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wainwright.
Have we, have we looked at what the work that this company has done physically, looked at it?
I haven't traveled down there to look at it, no. I have spoke, we've spoken to the county, and this isn't the first time that they've used them, and they've been very satisfied with the work that they do.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Gamble, seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to proclamations and presentations. We're going to hear from Greg Scott and Alan Rice as they update us on the 50th celebration flying that was held on March 26th, 2016 at Swanee County Airport. Give our attention now to Greg Scott.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to come today. Just wanted to share with you that, as some of y'all know, I don't do committees very well. I like to, if this got my name on it, I like to be in control and in charge and take care of things. The EAA formed a group, a committee to work on the celebration, and as very quickly I realized that these guys know what they're talking about and did a tremendous job. And Alan Rice's leadership, he's the president of the EAA 797, excuse me, and did a tremendous job, so I'll present to you Alan Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you for coming, Mr. Rice.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and staff, my name's Alan Rice, and as Greg said, I'm the president of the EAA Experimental Aircraft Association Chapter that's located out at the Swanee County Airport, and I'd just like to thank you first off for allowing me to speak today. We had a great event on March 26th, and we had a lot of help from Greg and his crew from Parks Recreation. I think we pulled off a fairly successful event in spite of the weather. So let me go ahead and just play this short little PowerPoint video here, and you can get an idea of what was going on that day in spite of the dire predictions of gloom and doom from all the weather forecasters. The day turned out pretty well, so enjoy this short little video here. We just tried to give you a little flavor of what happened that day. What we're trying to do out at the airport, at least with our EAA chapter in cooperation with Greg from Parks Recreation, we're trying to promote the Swanee County Airport, get more traffic in there. We're also trying to promote aviation careers. You notice in a lot of those clips, there was a lot of kids in there. What we do with the EAA, we take kids up, and adults for that matter, we give them free airplane rides. And especially with the kids, we're trying to show them what they can do in aviation, the potential for careers and jobs and that sort of thing. So our Young Eagles program is a big part of what we do through the EAA. We flew 61 kids and 16 adults, and those were all free airplane rides that you saw going up one after the other there. The third thing we're trying to do is promote the airport within the business community. So Dr. Jackson was out there from Economic Development, and he was greeting people and talking to people about the potential for business out at the airport. So those are our three major goals for what we see is trying to promote the airport and get things going out there. It was totally a free event. All the rides, like I said, were free. We had about 350 participants, which to me was a great success considering the weather that day. You know, obviously, we're at the mercy of the weather gods, and it was about the best we could do. Fortunately, we were well supported by the people in town who came out to see what was going on at the airport that day, so that kind of saved us. We have, and we did have a few of the aircraft that we were expecting to come in, fortunately. Other participants that we had were the Blood Bank, we had car dealership out there, the Transit Authority, and you saw Life Flights helicopter out there participating as well. So I'd just like to thank you all for your support. We'd like to make this event an annual event. We kicked it off this past year as our 50th anniversary celebration for the airport, which was established in 1965. We hope to go on from here and look for bigger and better things. So at this time, I'd like to present a little token of our appreciation to the Commissioner and to Chairman Bashaw, just as a remembrance of this day and the 50th anniversary celebration.
I'll come. Paper will probably want to get a picture.
Say, let me get a picture.
Whole scene.
Smile.
I have the EAA chapter and.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I had the honor of going out there. I was joined by Commissioner Sessions, and then Dr. Jackson was out there representing the county, and maybe some of the other Commissioners stopped by throughout the day. I will tell you that no matter if you like flying or you don't, I think we have to recognize that flying is a huge engineering feat that man has accomplished, and it always, we always look skyward when we see a plane going over. So we thank you for your efforts to promote our airport. We know that DOT has continued to make repeated investments in Swanee County's airport when surrounding counties, barring Columbia County, but some of the others don't have one. And so we know that their continued investment in that means that they have an interest in this community, and we appreciate you bringing, opening that up to us through your efforts in this way and any other, and I'm sure that if anyone had any questions or concerns about that, that they could go to any one of the members of your club, and they'd be happy to give them information about our airport. So they gave each one of the Commissioners shirts like they're wearing out there, so that's nice, and we really appreciate those as well. So once again, thank you very much. All right, moving on to Commissioner items. I have one Commissioner item that was presented to me by Commissioner Clyde Fleming, and so we'll turn the floor over to him at this time. Commissioner Fleming?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have a item. In 2014, a committee began meeting to discuss the future of the Douglas Center. Discussions descended around funding options, prioritization, and potential uses if improvements were made. This is a request to allow the committee to report recommendation to the County Commission for a consider, consideration in future meetings. Committee members were myself, Clyde Fleming, James Cooper, Clifford Gwynn, Robert Ford, Sharon Higgins, and Benny Thomas. Mr. Chairman, I'll for motion that for approval.
I second.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. Moving on to county attorney items, we have four this evening that Mr. Pravat wants to present to us, so at this time, I'll turn the floor over to him, and he can brief us on each of these items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, tonight I have four different economic development grant agreements for approval. The grant agreements themselves will, you know, they're, are addressed to each of the four different entities, and it's just the form of the agreement. The form would then be submitted to each of the individual entities, and they have a 30-day window to win, you know, to try to look at, see if there's some problem with the wording, and see whether or not we would accept such any change in wording. Then they'll bring it back, you know, for final, you know, final approval if they, you know, submit a change. But otherwise, the agreement that I have come up with, we had a format that Mr. Jackson and I have been working with, and we initially used it, the same basic format with the Klausner Group, and now we're backed to catch up with these four entities because they are all decided to be moving forward. We had one other entity that has decided not to go forward, which we had indicated we would have, you know, give them a grant, but these four have all indicated that they are moving forward. So what I'd like for you to do this evening is to approve each of the agreements, but I need to have each of the agreements approved as a separate motion. So the entities involved are first with Shenandoah Dairy, Inc., second would be Ease Land Organic Farm, and a very special place, Inc. The third one would be Sorenson and Smith LLC, and that's the Rising Oaks ALF facility. And then finally, Southern Cross Dairy LLC. And if I could, gentlemen, like I said, have a motion for each individual one.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. Are there any questions for Mr. Pravat before we move forward, please?
The one that withdrew and is not moving forward, that just takes everything off the table, it's gone away.
Yes, sir. We didn't get to the stage like we are now to get a grant agreement.
Yeah, I just.
So it's gone.
It was a performance-based grant, so.
Correct.
They ceased and went away.
That's right.
Any further, anything further? So we'll take item number 22, discuss possible board action economic development grant with Shenandoah Dairy, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion to approve made by Commissioner Gamble, seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 23, discuss with possible board action economic development grant with Ease Land Organic Farm.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Gamble, seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 24, discuss with possible board action economic development grant agreement with Rising Oak Assisted Living Facility.
I think motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Sessions, seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 25, discuss with possible board action economic development grant agreement with Southern Cross Dairy LLC. What are the wishes of the board?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Do you have anything further, Mr. Pravat?
No, sir, I don't, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Moving on to general business, appointments to the Value Adjustment Board, two county Commissioners as regular members, one county Commissioner as an alternate, one citizen as a regular member, and one citizen as an alternate. I think that this committee or this board is a very important board, and I think that it requires that the board would make the decision on this. And so, in light of that fact, the current configuration of that may stand at this time, but I thought we might open up the floor to someone who does not serve on that board, maybe as an alternate, wanting to move up to regular member, or maybe we leave it the same. It doesn't matter, to me. But if there's anybody who has not served on the board in a regular position that would like to serve on that board in a regular position, please speak now. See, that's what happens with these boards. So, if I understand correctly from the silence, that they, everybody likes the current configuration?
Actually, I'll say that Mr. Commissioner Gamble and I basically, that's a split duty here this past year.
Good.
I was the alternate, but...
You were the alternate?
But he was.
Yeah.
I wound up stepping in and filling in for him, and he started being the alternate.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, who's the other, that's Commissioner Fleming?
Clyde Fleming is the other one.
I've got two other Thursday night meetings, so...
It's in the daytime. It's in the morning.
These are mornings meetings.
It's in the morning.
These are mornings meetings.
I mean, if I have to, I can, but if you want to get off of it.
I'm fine in any position you want me to sit.
I don't mind.
Well, that's what everybody says, but we serve on so many different boards. I mean, it's almost, it's like when you get, you sit down as a chairman, and you have to make a determination, you go, well, who's not working? And everybody's got lots of assignments, so it's kind of hard.
Whatever your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
I know, I know. You always say that. You always say that.
Mr. Chairman, whatever, if, whatever.
No, no, no. I made my statement at the beginning, I was not going to make this decision on my own at this point, so...
Looks like you are.
Yeah. How's that?
I'm okay with it like it is, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, good. So, just for clarification, so...
Would you add to me?
Everybody stays where they are. As far as the citizen members go, there's one citizen, regular member, and one citizen as alternate, and if there is someone in the audience that would like to serve on this board, other than those who are already serving, I would entertain that position now.
Okay. I've watched enough of them already.
Yeah, okay. Well, I want to ask the board if they have any problem with that, is serving as the regular member. Does anybody have any problem with that?
I don't.
And those of you who serve on the board?
I, no offense, I'd rather leave Ms. Bracewell there. I mean, she's, she's very active in the community, and we'll find another spot for Mr. John to fill.
Understood. Does the other members of the board feel the same way?
Not me.
Okay. All right, so we'll leave Ms. Bracewell there in her current...
She's in good luck.
All right. And then, as the alternate position, Mr. Hancock serves there at this point in time. Mr. Hancock, how many times have you had to go in this time, over the past year? Say again?
I go in.
I know you go anyway, but I mean, how many times have you had to fill in, if at all?
He's filled in since I've been on. I've served on it every year that I've been on the board, and I've, I want to say he's filled in a time or two since I've been there.
I guess my point, how often do you meet?
That depends on how many. We usually have an organizational meeting, and then we set appointments for when the next ones will be, and it depends on how many petitions you get come in. If all of them are heard and make the first one, then it's canceled. Some of them canceled, some of them rescheduled, but you can start meeting from, I can't remember when the start date is, but it can go all the way up through the end of November. But typically, we meet usually about three times, and they, by that point in time, the petition process is over with. Some have come to further hearings, some have canceled, it's over with.
So, is that three times in the last year, Mr. Hancock, or is that over the course of the time that you've served on that board?
I've done it the last year.
Three times. How many times have you met?
We usually meet three times, but at least...
Which quarter?
No.
Okay. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is it the regular person making the meetings?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, she makes them.
All right.
I sit in for the school board.
Okay. All right.
He doesn't, as an alternate, he doesn't just sit in for the other citizen. He sits as a school board member on there. And it's not just, it's not just that somebody doesn't show up for a meeting. There's been times where there's been, when I've served as an alternate, I've had to fill in for Commissioner Wainwright. He was there, but one of the hearings came...
But you just served as an alternate, because there was not another member there?
No, because...
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest on a family member filing a petition, and it was better for me to go sit in that position and make the decision rather than him do it.
Understood. Okay. It's a very important board. It's interesting. So, are we okay with leaving it as is, then, as a board? That's the way I see it. Okay. Excellent. I love the discussion. All right, moving on. Item number 27, discuss with possible board action any items related to the state's attorney's office if necessary. Are there any items...
I'd like for you to go back in, on 26. I know you make the appointment, but are you, you go to announce the appointments?
Sure. The appointments to the Value Adjustment Board would be Commissioner Wainwright as a regular member, Commissioner Gamble as an alternate, Commissioner Fleming as a regular member. Citizen one as a regular member would be Mrs. Betty Bracewell, and Citizen one as an alternate would be Mr. Bo Hancock.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 27, is there anything we need to discuss about the state's attorney's office?
I'll give you a 30-second update.
Did we get any ground-penetrating radar?
Yes, that was part of my 30-second update. The radar has been done. I'm waiting for the report. It should be here by the end of this week. My hope is that there are no anomalies that show up that require grouting. If that occurs, I'll let you know as soon as possible, because we may want to schedule a special meeting if necessary. But let me just go ahead and add, you know, previously, I asked the board to authorize me to go ahead and advertise any bids necessary for services that we would have to have relocated, utilities, things of that nature. All of those bids, the results would come back to this board for consideration. In the case of this ground-penetrating radar and the report that I'm anticipating, if the, if the board would like, you could go ahead and authorize me to begin a bid procedure if necessary for grouting, if that report comes back and requires such. Because otherwise, we would have to hold a special meeting so that you can authorize me to advertise for grouting. If it requires that, there will be a remediation plan included in that report. It would be a matter of going ahead and advertising it.
Right. So, we've selected the site. It is the site, so if, I guess, does anybody understand what he's asking for? He's not asking for an expenditure of funds. He's just saying, let's be efficient in government, and let's go ahead and bid this out per the specs to get us some information so we can make a decision if we want to move forward with that.
And as a result of the report indicated.
Correct.
If the report indicates that. My hope, again, is that it doesn't indicate that, because it is going to take more time than we have. But if it's going to be required, then we can go ahead and bid it.
The company doing the radar, does the recommendation for the grouting come from them?
Well, let me just say, a remediation recommendation is going to be made. 99% of the time, it is grouting.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying, is they, it doesn't, they don't give us the report, and then we have somebody else look at it. It's going to come back from them.
It'll come back from them.
I don't see a need to call a special meeting for it, Mr. Chairman.
I don't either. I'm saying, if you just, if you just go ahead and let them bid it, then we're good on that. We just, do we, we need a motion for that.
All I'd ask is that, prior to you doing it, that you afford us a copy of the report.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to allow Mr. Harris to move forward with the bidding process?
Motion approved.
I second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion?
If needed, correct?
Yeah, if needed.
If needed.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one of the quick comment publicly.
It's more than 30 seconds.
The Sheriff's Department, well, this isn't an update, that's illegal. But I just want to say how much, publicly, how much I appreciate the Sheriff's Department and the Clerk's Office working with us to eliminate the need to keep those storage containers in this area. There was a lot of scrambling that occurred, and we moved containers out to the Sheriff's Operations Center out there off 136. We did a number of things very quickly, used inmates to move materials out of containers, got everything out of here, and it was very successful. So, I'm thankful, very thankful for that, because we didn't have a lot more time to spend messing around with that stuff. But as you can see, everything's cleared up now. The little house is gone now. Most of you missed out on the parade. Mr. Pravat and I were there. But anyway...
When'd the house go? I thought it was there yesterday.
Huh?
I said, when'd the house go?
It actually left early this morning.
I think so, because I came by yesterday and it was there.
And I'm going to tell you what, I do have a concern. Now that that house is gone, I do have a concern with people running the stop sign that are going through from east to west, because...
Landmark is gone.
Yeah, the landmark is gone, and I'm afraid that people are going to drive right through that four-way stop now, because the house isn't there. But in any event, I'm thankful that it's gone. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, moving on, additional agenda items. I have one additional agenda item. Are there any others? Anyone would like to add to the agenda at this time? I'll read this one into the record. Approval of payoff and release of ship lien for Alexandria in Madden. And it is a letter from Matt Pearson. He says, "Mr. Bashaw, enclosed the check number 19138 from Abstract Title Trust dated April 22, 2016, made payable to Swanee County Ship in the amount of $2,288.72. This represents the payoff of the ship lien against Alexandria in Madden. Please execute the enclosed release of lien and agreement and return to office and may afford it to the closing company." And of course, we'll let Mr. Pravat go over this before we sign it, if we decide to approve the payoff and release of the ship lien. What are the wishes of the board?
Move approval, continue upon attorney's approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Gamble. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. Is there any further discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number 29, public concerns and comments. I don't have any public comment cards here tonight. Item number 30, administrators' comments and information. Did you already give us your 25 cents? Okay. Item number 31, board members' inquiries, requests, and comments. We'll start with Commissioner Wainwright this evening.
Yeah, I've got a little something, for I don't know how many years, many years, dedicated teacher here in Swanee County, Candy Pickers, and staff has taken care of special needs kids, and has done so admirably at many levels, with the participation of her own family, many volunteers, and over the last 15, 16, 17 years, they, every year they would take the kids and go down to the Elks Club Youth Camp, which is a little bit southeast of Ocala. And this, she's retiring, this was her last year going down there, and they taught me in the Go, and my son had been volunteering for a number of years, and they taught me and my wife in the Go. And so, we went Friday and went down to this facility, and I will tell you that it is a very remarkable facility. I was blown away. I had one of the best weekends I've ever had with these kids and the facilities, and the staff that Elks provides is incomparable. And they are so committed to helping with these kids. It's an amazing sight. I had a great time, and there's a lot of unsung heroes in this community, but Candy, Candy's Crew, they call them, is certainly one of them. My heart goes out to her and her family. They've been doing this for, again, for a number of years, and that is a labor of love. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Wainwright. Mr. Gamble?
I've just got one thing, Mr. Chairman. Nothing too big of a deal. Just wanted to make you all aware of some changes. I was doing some reading and some research on this past legislative session, and one of the bills that passed and was signed into law via effect of November 1, 2017, is that will no longer be allowed to place a special fire assessment on ag buildings and ag properties. Just give you all some heads up that that's coming down the pipe. I don't know, I talked to Mr. Summers about it and Mr. Harris, and they're running some numbers to see if it's going to affect us much at all, because a lot of our ag land assessments cap out at a certain acreage, so it may not have a big budget impact on us, as I thought it would at first. Just give you all a heads up on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamble. Commissioner Fleming?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sessions?
I want to thank Ms. Betty for opening up the library early on Saturday, allowed the fire department to provide training for the community for CPR and first aid. I just really appreciate her doing that, and I appreciate the fire department for putting it on for the community. There was probably, what, 30, 30-plus people there.
Well, I don't have anything either this evening, so I just need one thing.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening. Drive safe.